Going to start with our work session and Brad is going to talk us through some competency based education in the state.
Yeah, sounds good. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here. I do have the slides that I put together that I talked through on the video. Would it be helpful to throw them up on the screen so they're there? Are we okay? So I might need Carol or David's assistance to make sure I do that correctly.
Just go ahead and share your screen. Hopefully that will make it happen.
Okay, right now, when I'm in Zoom, it does not have the sharing option.
Interesting. So Brad, you're just have Zoom running. Is Craig, are you actually in the meeting?
I'm in the meeting on my laptop. I think I am. I see myself. Oh, here we go. Alrighty. Share my screen. Alright, alright. There we go.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Alright, so what I did, if you had a chance to watch the video, you'll know. I attended the webinar that dates me at this point, but that NASB had put on around reimagining schools. I've had their most recent publication, read through that and went through all of our law and guidance and et cetera, et cetera, to try to get myself ready. We'll see if I'm ready, but I tried. So I've got the slides up. I can certainly walk through things. If folks had the opportunity to review the video, then I don't know if I necessarily need to walk through all of it again, and I'm happy to answer questions, but really I'm just here as a resource to you to walk through whatever would be helpful regarding competency based education. So what would be most helpful this morning?
I would appreciate you just going through them quickly.
Sure.
Just because that gives us sort of a
Yeah.
passage away.
Yeah.
Talk about it.
And also somewhere in all the NASB stuff I've seen and read, they mentioned Iowa as having competency based education in place. And I'm like, oh, that's nice. What does that mean in Iowa?
Absolutely. So why don't I just go ahead and click through some of these, talk through them? And then we can kind of go from there. That sounds agreeable. So record the video. Do folks have access to the slides? Is there a links in here? Okay, just make sure you've got it for whenever you want to look at it. Then today we're, we're walking through things together. So what I did was I put the definition that the Aurora Institute has for competency based education here. It's broad, it's updated, and I know NASB relies heavily on this for their work. The session that they did include the executive officer of the Aspen or the Aurora Institute. So the, the quick of this is competency based education is about empowering students first and foremost, making sure that the center of making decisions about their learning. That we aren't just assessing to take the temperature of students to find out what they know, we're assessing to find out what they are learning and what they need to continue to learn. Based on that data, we want to make sure that students get that support and that it's individualized and differentiated based on what they need. And that progress through grade levels or through the curriculum isn't based on the passage of time. It's based on their demonstration of learning and that there's evidence of their learning that they move through in that way. And that those pathways to learning and moving forward are individualized, student centered. There are a lot of words that get thrown around when we talk about this. I took notes on the webinar that NASB did, and I think the, the presenters on for that webinar did a fantastic job. As they were covering the landscape of all of this, I think I've recorded 40 or 50 different sort of terms, catchphrases, whatever you want to call them. Because we use a lot of the same words to mean different things and lots of different words to mean the same thing. So that's something keep in mind here as we're, as we're going. We want to make sure that we're using strategies to ensure equity and opportunity to learn for all students. And that we're reflective and responsive to culture of the school and the community that the, the school serves, where schools are embedded in our communities and they're part of them. And ultimately too, this is about having rigorous common expectations for learning. And that the students know what those are and that those aren't a secret, that they're evidenced daily and they're able to be accessed by students through multiple modes of input.
On number five, you have different pathways. As the state developed, specific pathways for competency based.
Yeah, we don't have specific pathways for competency based education. I'll get into what the laws lay out here. So that's a nice preview for that. But those pathways would be developed at the local level, which aligns with a lot of our other educational policy, which really comes down to, we try to make sure in the laws layout that most decisions are laid out at the local level and decided, decided there.
I would assume that the most difficult part of this is writing the competencies. The difficulty would be determining what the competencies are and then writing description of that in terms of evaluation as well.
It's foundational, right? Yeah, there's a huge challenge there logistically, because it's challenging work to do. But also politically as well, because you do get into, if we tried to do that as a state, then we have to look back at, are we exceeding our authority or not? And is there enough will to do that type of thing? Are we truly individualized? If it's happening at the aggregate levels opposed to local level. So that's, that's a huge challenge.
And the same thing I would, I would say is that without question, the idea of competency based education would be to integrate different classes. Is that fair to say as well? You don't teach your class in isolation anymore. Teach classes with another colleague, English, history, math. Put those classes together.
Yeah, absolutely. The whole notion of cross curricular instruction, bundling and competencies, things, skills that are common across different disciplines and draw upon each other. And I will note to here now, since you posed it, Mike, and I'll hit it a couple of other times here as well. Some of these practices, like the notion of bundling standards together across curricular courses or instruction, aren't unique to competency based education, but they are features of competency based education. But there are other orientations to how you can organize school that build on those practices as well.
I know I've read or seen something about this. How are in Iowa, do we have a system set up for universities to accept credit that's based on competency based?
Or there, there are some provisions in state code that permit districts to essentially create a unit that fulfills the requirement of a course that students can demonstrate competency, mastery and earn the credit. Without it being what we would traditionally call a course, it's more of a competence based unit. And you don't have to have 120 hours of instruction that the students demonstrate they have mastery, then they've earned the credit.
Not unlike a high school student going to college and saying, I already can speak Spanish. So why should I take Spanish? So if they can demonstrate that competency, then
Right.
point.
Right.
You know, which makes a lot of sense.
And I think that's the underlying logic here for competency based education and, and some other orientations as well, which is fundamentally, if students are learning and they can demonstrate that in a very real way, then let's keep learning. Let's accelerate there if we can. If students need more time or opportunity, then we adjust that way as well.
Yeah, this is the ultimate in differentiated education to me. It's, it's the whole thing that we've been striving for, to get kids on their own track, on their own. We can move along as quickly as we can.
Yeah. How can we be truly individualized for, for every student and give them that, give them those opportunities? Yeah. Great questions, and I think we'll probably circle back to some of these topics too as we go. I just wanted to highlight right out of the gate, does CBE actually work? There are a lot of great ideas out there and there's been research on many of them. But the question fundamentally remains is an idea is great, but we have to execute and we have to demonstrate that we're realizing the So there's been some recent work done from school years around 2019, pre pandemic research that was published in 2020. I've got links to those two studies here that provide support for, for schools that implement practices associated with competency based education as a package. At the high school level primarily, we do see some better performance from students in the aggregate there. And that's some of the more compelling evidence to date on the effectiveness of competency based education. I'll note, and it's true for some of the other things I want to talk about as well, those studies, these studies aren't necessarily published in peer reviewed journals, which only matters unless you really enjoy spending time reading peer reviewed journals, which
Brad does.
Yeah, I love.
We have Brad.
Right. That's not one of your hobbies. I, I think why that would matter to you is the whole process of peer review is one of quality control, right? And so that's not to say these aren't quality studies, but rather that's another check along the way. But there it's, in reading those studies, they're really encouraging and I think compelling evidence for competency based education. To contrast that, there was a research synthesis done, that's the bottom link there, published in 2020. So based on that information, they found really mixed results. They saw some instances where there's some there was some positive evidence of success for changing teacher practice, improvements in student outcomes. But there are also many studies that didn't show a lot of positive impact. So what to do, right? This happens a lot in education where we've got a lot of research and when you put it on the table and you try to summarize it to mixed bag. So we can't just not do anything. We need to make sense of all of this, right? And so there's another study done, just a synthesis. It was done earlier, but I, I found it to the quote here to be reflective of the more recent research synthesis. And so, but I like the way they put it here. And so I don't, I don't want to read that at you. But the long and short of it, as you're looking at it, is that there's a model or a definition for competency based education. But implementation is a lot messier than that, right? And that doesn't mean we shouldn't have a definition. It just means that some things get implemented more than others to varying degrees. And sometimes when schools are trying things, they've got two of the seven components that they aren't doing the rest. So that's, I found that to be an important takeaway from all of this. Does it work or not? Which is, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but we also need to know what it is we're asking for and what we're trying to do, because a lot of the research on this is going to point to effective practice. But in the aggregate, the model I think is still very new in terms of testing it. That definition was just updated a couple of years ago. So work to do, and I think some real encouraging things there. Like there's a balance to it. So this might gets into some of your questions and Betty, you too, when you noted that Iowa has CBE in place. What does that actually mean, right? So what I would point to in reading some of the NASB work and Aurora Institute work is what they're really talking about is some of what we've got passed in our law and some of our early efforts to find out, is this something we should invest in to scale? Meaning this is going to be a big vehicle for us to try to improve school for all of our schools. So to back all the way up to, which is frightening to me anyway, almost a decade ago now, 2012, there was a bill passed that approved competency based education as an allowable practice in our state. And what followed up the next legislative session was funding to essentially work on the CDE pathways that we were talking about earlier. Can we develop those pathways at the state level? What does that look like? And so we were doing that amongst other things to find out, is this viable for us? So we had 10 districts participating in that pilot, and I believe I get into that in a minute. So I'll come back to that. But early on, those are some of the laws. Fund a pilot. See if there's merit in this work. Since then, a law has been passed that changed what was, to give districts options on what they essentially counted as enough time for school. So we had 180 days. That hasn't gone away. And that's still a viable option for districts if they want to. They have to indicate in their calendar, their school calendar, we've got at least 180 days of instruction for us, right? Districts can also demonstrate they're meeting the calendar requirement by saying they've got 1,080 hours of instruction. Meaning that is an example, if there's a half day because of snow or weather, that if schools get a few hours in, they can work towards, if they've adopted the hours approach to meet the calendar requirement, then they've met some of that requirement as opposed to what we had to have a snow day because we were only in school for three hours, wherever the case may be.
But you could count that as a whole day.
It depends on how it's set up. You could count towards that 1,080 hours.
Yeah, but
Yeah.
you were in school and you're dismissed because of adverse weather, you can still count that day. If you're on the day.
And you can still count those hours if you're in an hour format?
Well, you say upfront, we're going to do calendar, we're going to calendar by day or calendar by hours.
Right.
Right. So you've got to have that. Which one are you doing? And then you follow the path from there in terms of whether or not you're meeting the requirement.
Most every school district, I think, is on the 1080 hours, if I remember.
Most of them are, yes. It might all be.
And we're still, you're still talking time.
Yeah.
One source of time versus another source of time.
Absolutely.
Really not getting into the cops is a great flexibility.
Right. And I think that's why a lot of districts shifted to that, to me, the calendar requirement, right? Is that offers a lot of flexibility just for inclement weather and getting your time in, but also to be able to do things like competency based education. I think that was a piece of the puzzle because as you look at, again, some of the NASB work, that's what they really point to is it's not just kids sitting in a chair for a day. It's about enough time for them to progress and the amount of time any given student needs might be different in that orientation, depending on where their learning is at and what it takes to help them progress. So that's one of the things that when folks say Iowa's got CBE in place, that's one of the things they point to is that flexibility. And then I mentioned earlier, another bit that folks point to is the bit of the law that allows at the high school level, instead of having to have 120 hours of instruction to complete a course, if students can demonstrate mastery in that unit as has been organized, then they earn the credit for that. So between that and the pilot study that we did in districts on their own, saying we, we are competency based education district. When folks point to Iowa and say it's in place, that's what they mean. Now, if you go back to that, that doesn't mean that we've wholesale said at the Department of Education, a competency based education is, is what we're doing. Here's what we mean. Every district, you've got to go do all this now, and this is how we're going to support you to do that. But we do have some really important laws in place that are prerequisite to doing the things that we, they're laid out in the model. And so we had the pilot study and their districts that continue to operate under that, that premise or that framework. So the results of the pilot. Again, there's a link here if you're interested in looking at the, the reports. And we had an external evaluator. That's one of the important features when you do things like this is, and at the Department of Education, we try to bring you data when you've got questions and we'll probably be talking about some of that a little bit later. But when you want to test the validity of things, sometimes it helps to have the external evaluation, right? So with that, most of the data were collected over the course of, it was like four years. Were qualitative and anecdotal. There, it was implemented in varying degrees across nine of the 10 participating districts. One of the districts dropped out, not unusual. A lot of times when you start with an initiative, it's not what people thought they were signing up for. So, but nine stuck it through to the end and, and I believe some of them continued to operate with a competency based education approach. But implementation varied and the primary piece of quantitative data that was collected was Iowa testing data. So they were looking at did students progress or did students progress in those schools over the sort of lifespan of that pilot? And here's what we saw, the percentage of proficient and advanced students stayed at the same level or increased in five of the districts in math and eight in reading from 2012, 13 to 2015, 16. And so what that means is beyond the numbers that are there is for four of the districts, their scores went down. The percentage of students proficient or advanced went down in math. Mixed bag, right? And we also saw, not surprising and not necessarily you need to, he, districts needed a lot of support to move the work forward. Is one example, Mike, writing the competencies and creating the pathways. We never got to statewide pathways. It's just a lot of work.
Have you worked on, on the non proficient students? Were there any work done on the non proficient students? Do you know about that?
In terms of how they were addressing their needs within the CDE framework or?
What happened? Yeah, what happened?
Right.
Non proficient.
So that's not, that wasn't part of the evaluation.
Okay.
But to your, to your point, Kim, that any system that we use to improve what we do in schools needs to be attendant to the needs of all students, right? And that's why the tenants of competency based education, right, is we individualize. So if students aren't at mastery or aren't that proficient, then what are we going to do to support them? What's their trajectory over time? And even though we're individualized and we don't want to hold kids back, we, and we don't, that's not a practice we would promote at, at all in terms of trying to slow student learning down. But if students are struggling, then what are we going to do to actually accelerate their learning? Because they can't just continue on a slower trajectory that doesn't get them to mastery with the full set of knowledge and skills that all students need to demonstrate by the end of high school.
Brad, were the, were the changes significant, statistically significant going up or down?
The, this was a, I would call more of a qualitative analysis of, we saw scores go up, but without the significance testing.
These were, I see 2012 to 2016, which should have been the, the the Iowa assessments, which have changed now to.
They've changed probably twice since the study, which is an important point, is our students today are being assessed on things that they were potentially not being assessed on then. But in that time, right, that's the assessment that they were using. Yep.
Now, are some of those five, again, we just talked about collecting maybe a lot of data recently, but are some of those five original ones that had great success with this, are they still doing competency based education?
Yeah.
Are matchups or link between those that didn't do well and they chosen to, to throw it out?
Yeah. So I know of at least one district for sure that has continued to stick with that. Van Meter, I believe, has, has continued to stick with it.
We had some kids that you're talking about that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we haven't followed up formally with, with the districts because, and what I'll kind of get to here is the funding got cut. And because when we looked at the results, it's not that there wasn't good work going on. There are research based practice happening, competency based education. That's not it. As a vehicle for how we were going to scale effective practice and move the needle for all of our students, between our internal reflection on the data, looking at the policy landscape and legislative appetite for continuing to work. It just didn't add up. That doesn't mean we give up on the practices that we're talking about. But Mike, I think you said it earlier. In some ways, competency based education is the pinnacle of what we aspire to in our educational system, right? And there are certainly districts, and you'll see from some of the research studies that have adopted a lot of what we would call competency based education. And at least at the high school level, have seen meaningful increases in, in student learning. So what lessons can we learn from that, right?
You know, I'm not even, I don't know, I may be way off on this, but I'm not even sure the goal is necessarily to see increases. We don't want decreases, of course. I think the, the goal should be that it's individualized, that there are some students who learn better in certain ways, and some students who, you know, I, I just think that not, the emphasis shouldn't totally be on did skills increase, but whether or not students succeed in this kind of a model.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I, I hear you. And you know, we, if you look at the trajectory of the last 20 years, from a policy, political perspective and a practice perspective, I think sometimes we've leaned way too hard on did kids get to the score? And what CBE really talks about is did students master important skills in a way that's meaningful and engaged to them? They get the supports they need and they continue to learn over time, right? And even though it's not fully to the full vision of CBE, one of the reasons why we changed our accountability approach when ESA got passed to just how many kids are proficient? How many students are proficient to having a significant portion of that accountability index be towards growth? So even if students aren't getting to proficient, how are we going to acknowledge, recognize and build upon when students are demonstrating that they're learning and they're on that path, even if they didn't get to the proficiency score? But I'll tell you too, a proficiency, a great level of proficiency does not necessarily indicate mastery across all the standards or competencies. So it's not to say that, that that doesn't matter. I think the, the information matters. It's just, I don't think to that sort of pinnacle of what competency based education is really calling for. Yeah.
Memory serves me correctly, this board has in the past, we even had a, a goal dealing with competency based education and we had a speaker come, I think from New Hampshire.
Yes.
And I think New Hampshire adopted a statewide competency based program. Have you researched that to see what their results have been?
Yeah. So they, they really leaned heavily into several aspects, but what they came to talk to us about was their work around having an alternative way to assess progress than sort of every item is the same for every student on a standardized assessment, right? And what we talk about here, and I clicked to the next slide to, to point to some things, what we're talking about there are learning progressions, which is sort of that. We lay out here the skills that students need and when they're building towards it, what do those approximations of the end skill or competency look like? And so New Hampshire has been a leader in our country around creating, and they, they've been using that towards their accountability system. And last I checked, I looked at a little bit in preparation for all of this. I can certainly continue to dig more. Is that they continue to use that approach. ESA granted even more flexibility to districts or estates in terms of how they design their accountability systems. I wouldn't say when you look at things like NAEP or other, just their overall proficiency levels, that they are an outlier on the way positive side. I think they're doing a really strong work, but like On the way positive side, I think they're doing a really strong work, but like the rest of us. They've got different districts in different places with different needs and so. That that sort of thing sort of tends to regress to the mean. What I mean by that is it'll be really helpful for some, less helpful for others, but it all kind of goes towards this aggregate. It may have ticked up a little bit, but. I don't know.
I was making inroads with the fast assessments at the elementary school where you have differentiation instruction. So the old saying goes, if you hold time as a constant and learning is a variable, if you reverse it around, then learning is a constant.
If I can interrupt, Hannah, it looks like you had a couple of questions in the chat.
Yeah, I was just asking about some of the ways like the data was collected because I feel like there might be some. Holes in that and kind of bouncing off of one of the questions that one of you guys asked earlier. Like how, is there any data on how much the students retain and can and apply and they can apply their learning down the road? Because I think the difference between competency based education and the one that we're using now. Is is how well the students retain that information and how much they're engaged in school when they're involved in this type of learning. So I wasn't sure if there was any information or data around that.
Yeah, so I I want to make sure I'm answering your question, Hannah. Are you talking about the Iowa testing data?
Yeah, I think like the Iowa testing data, but then also the data that you took from the schools who were engaged in competency based education. If there was any data on on the specifics of like how students were engaged in school as well, because I think test scores is one thing. But the amount of engagement and the amount that the students are able to retain their information is even more important.
Yeah, I agree. Did you follow?
I was suggesting and just sort of build off of that, it seems to me that when we are engaged in our own education, we tend to retain things better. When we are studying for a test, sometimes it doesn't work real good. So in terms of long term usefulness of that. And I think that's one of the things of competency based education, you are actively involved in your education, you're making choices about which direction you're going to go. And what you're going to learn. And I think when we are driven that way, we tend to learn over the long haul. Sometimes the testing is a short, is just a short answer. You know, can I just regurgitate what I just learned? So I think her question is is really good and I think that's part of the problem. Students, good students are going to still be really good students and they in fact may learn more because they want to be actively involved. Will the light of this room power my electrical device or my electronic device? Will it?
Right.
Anybody know where?
No.
No.
Why not?
Because it does not have the energy.
So so if I took that as a challenge as a student, then where would that lead me? What would I have to know, Kim? In order to be able to answer that question. It seems to me you would learn a lot of things along the way, but you never thought about learning. Or the teacher perhaps even didn't think about. It is an exciting way to teach, but it takes a really creative teacher. It takes really good instruction. And we're not all equipped for a lot of the things that.
Sure.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to get in your way.
Well, no, I, so I think Hannah and Mike hope to. To try to answer the question of some of the challenges that you're laying out. I would say absolutely engaging students in meaningful learning that generalizes to other applications outside of a classroom. Is what we should be all about. We shouldn't be teaching to a test to make sure we attain a score that helps us get to the next. Grade level or course or whatever their case may be, because when you're done. Hannah, I'm guessing from knowing you a little bit here from your work on the board and in your your question here is. There's a real so what question to all of that. And if students should absolutely be involved in making decisions. About what they're learning, how they're learning. And so to to the question that you asked Hannah. There, most of the data that from the evaluation report and it was done in that work. Again, was very anecdotal. And there wasn't anything pairing the Iowa testing data with other. Student survey or focus group or interview or. To look at or even more standardized measures of student engagement, those things weren't there in the evaluation. But we are left here. Oh, go ahead, Hannah, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, okay, that's that's good to know. I know that. Yeah, maybe in the future that could be something that's included, but I know that that data is sort of hard to collect and and measure as well. But then the other thing, building off of what Mike was saying earlier is is how creative a teacher needs to be to to build these like. Good programs and to ask the right questions to truly engage students. And I think our role in teacher prep programs around the state is is where we can really take advantage of that and work on that on that aspect.
Thanks Hannah, that that makes a lot of sense.
I thought it was interesting, eight of the nine. Schools in that pilot project, so same or increased reading skills. So I'm assuming that this is not an all or not. So you could develop a program specifically for reading. That was competency based, which might be one way to improve the reading levels. Of our students, which is not great.
Right, and right now in, at least from a law perspective, districts are allowed to. To do some of that work. But you're right, it was a mixed bag here. It was a mixed bag. We look at some of the other studies. In terms of helpful for math, not reading, helpful reading, not math. But it is a viable option if if districts have got the capacity to to do it, right? And we we want to make sure, and I think we do have a policy environment that allows it. I think one of the other questions too is that reflect on some of the NASB webinar. Presentation that we had here, some of the materials to me is what it comes down to is is CBE. The best match in terms of a framework, a model or approach for changing practice in our state. And. We made a decision. Around two thousand sixteen, when we looked at the totality of the evidence we had at that point, we were also doing other things at that time. We were, for example, implementing MTSS. To scale. And when we added it up and you look at the policies, the our high leverage policies for us, things like the Every Student Succeeds Act. Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, early literacy implementation law. None of those things prohibit the use of competency based education. But written into all of our plans is implementation of MTSS, in which we can embed a lot of the practices that are talked. About within competency based education. That whole notion of assessment for learning, where we're not just taking students' temperature, but. Or doing an autopsy at the end, well, how did it go? That we're assessing, we're making what isn't expected to be learned clear. And then we're assessing along the way in ways that teachers and students can work together and say, hey, we're. We're on the right track or maybe we need to reflect on how we change to better meet the needs of any particular student or group of students. So we're working with districts to try to set those learning goals off of the Iowa academic standards and. And what those progressions look like. So we're doing some of that now without developing the competencies themselves.
I, sorry, comment I would make is that, and I know this, I know all the pros and cons. The Iowa assessment part of it too is not necessarily an assessment of where the kids are. Because some kids just aren't good standardized test takers, period.
Right.
So it's not necessarily reflective, which doesn't vote well for teachers because that's part of what they're based on and it just is.
I agree with you, Georgia, but I think the flip side is true too. I think there's excellent test takers that are terrible students. Haven't learned anything. I know, I, I mean, I, I can't prove this, but I believe it based on my anecdotal life experience.
Yeah.
That's interesting too, that kids learn a lot of other things that we're not testing. The truth is, you don't have a way to test, you don't have a way to test everything that kids are learning there. Yeah, and there may be some things that now are ingrained in them about their own learning, taking charge of their, maybe some things that we're just not measuring. And I'm not sure colleges, universities are are ready. To for competency based education in terms of giving kids a real look at that. Would have a lot to do with your cooperating teacher. There's so many variables. There in terms of getting that. Can you imagine as a first year teacher walking into a very successful program? And and saying, oh my gosh, we didn't do any, we didn't do anything with this when I was in school. I mean, what do I do now? You know, so a lot of variables, yeah.
Absolutely.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you here, like in the middle of things, but I also have a couple of things that I would like to mention.
Please, you go for it, of course.
Do you guys mind if I come up?
Of course not.
I know, I just stick my nose in every time Brad's presenting and, but I'm sitting back here looking up some stuff that Brad and I have talked about and I'm like, we could mention this. Do you have a two by two matrix handy?
I will get it.
Okay. Betty, when you talked about like, you know, I don't know if the goal is to move the achievement score and like it's a valid comment. Is the ISAS like testing well on a standardized test really the goal? We have this and I put it in front of the board before, we have this two by two matrix of like. What are the student results that we care about and where do we put our effort? And we've used this like to decide where we put department funds and person time, you know? And we don't need to define the positive effect for kids as doing well on a standardized test and so and we don't. So when we have thought through that we have this massive spreadsheet of projects that we will spend money on. And the project can be being a compliance with the federal law, so we're obviously going to spend money on that. But it can also be something like competency based education, or it can be something like multi-tiered systems of support. The thing is, we look at something like effect size, so really well researched practices and return on investment. The thing about competency based education that I'm thinking as I'm listening to everyone talk and. And Brad's explaining like the evaluation that was done of the pilot in Iowa is. You know, there's valid questions about the data that we have because we don't have much. And there's not much nationally either because it is at best a promising practice.
Right.
It has not been thoroughly evaluated because. There's not much evident, it's, it is not well, even well defined. What is, what is in the package of CBE? So you take something like MTSS, it is extremely well defined. You can count on five fingers what goes into MTSS and you can walk into a classroom and or a school. It's not necessarily a classroom, but are you doing this or not? I can watch it and within, you know, thirty minutes, I know whether it's happening. CBE is very nebulous. The pilot in Iowa, the legislature actually got rid of before it got completely finished because it was such a train wreck. Like it was not being, like they couldn't even define what it was. And so I'm not saying that it's not a good idea to have individualized plans, but MTSS will get you that. And MTSS has an effect size over one, which means that it is off the charts in terms of ability to. Get you return on investment of your money. And so when we're looking at this and we're thinking, okay, we have X million dollars. Where are we going to put the money and how are we going to get teachers trained? You know, where do you put your money in educator prep programs? We're putting our money in MTSS because, you know, the few years that we had CBE, we got honestly. Dip out for it. Well, we got a headache and we got a lot of meetings, it didn't go anywhere. And that doesn't mean that we don't want individualized education and for kids to have something better than just performance on a test score. But MTSS can get us. Safe and caring learning environments and adult student relationships and like measures of things that we care about. That aren't just like doing well on the ISAS. We just had a great conversation with Waterloo schools about, don't focus on the ISAS so much. And it freaked him out, right? Because we've been telling him for what, twenty years that. Only thing that matters is your outcome assessment. So I just wanted to throw in there that. We think about those things all the time and it's not that we don't like the concept of CBE. It's that we're trying to figure out how to integrate the concept someplace else where we know the return on investment is going to be there, so.
No, that's great. One of the the great things about working with Amy is we're we're generally on the same page with things, but we describe it very differently.
Maybe my next, maybe my next question then for our next work session is, maybe we need a little more in-depth information about what MTSS is. I mean, we've talked about it and I just have this overall understanding and so.
For sure, like we can give you the list of the things we know have good effect size.
What are the five things?
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't name them right now.
Yeah, but we could give you the list and you could go to schools and look for them.
Is there any difference between competency based and standardized? Those interchangeable words or?
Some people use them interchangeably. I think the real difference probably is. When you contrast what practice should not look like with standards based and what practice should look like with competency based, and here's what I mean. Standards are a list of knowledge and skills that kids need to know and be able to do. Poor practice is when we teach those things one at a time in isolation. And we then test things one at a time. It's very inefficient and it doesn't generalize well at all. Competency based is about taking. In the way we started to approach it with the pilot that did not succeed was you actually take multiple standards and you. Put them together in a pile and you write a competency based on the constellation of those skills. So the idea really comes down to, we need to teach the big ideas. There are big ideas reflected in Iowa's academic standards. And we encourage educators to, when they're doing their lesson design. And they're purchasing, they're developing or acquiring curriculum materials, what we're doing with Iowa Learning Online or Iowa eLearning Central. Is we are constructing learning experiences that account for multiple standards. In an integrated way without having to develop new competency statements or individualized pathways. It's a step before. So I would say the difference is you can still put the instruction together, but. We aren't developing individualized pathways off of the collection of those learning skills.
Thank you both. Oh, go ahead.
So in some way, shape or form since nineteen eighty seven. But the current version we've been doing for the last eight or nine years and we're actually based on what we've learned from. The last eight or nine years and what's happened with the pandemic, we're actually updating and we're updating the model a little bit. But we're actually looking at more effective scaling strategies. We are implementing in some way, shape or form MTSS in every school in our state. What we need to do now is figure out how we get our coaching set up in such a way. That teachers and administrators are getting the feedback more frequently than we are able to give them from here. So we've got the pieces in place everywhere. We need to improve our support structure. And that's one of the important lessons that we've learned over the last eight or nine years. So I think we've got the engineering right on what we need to do. We just don't have the the boots on the ground with the skills they need to give schools the feedback they need. Just like we would be giving students feedback in their learning in a frequent enough ongoing way.
Some of these teachers that's coming, coming, this generation is coming on, are they, are we educated in CSS, do you know?
So that looks different from program to program, but and that would be a great conversation to have Larry.
Yeah.
For sure. But I'll I'll tell you. Larry is part of our newly formed internal team where we're figuring out how do we. More effectively integrate educator prep programs into what we're talking about. What is that support structure for districts and schools? Larry, your ears.
That is not the way you want to walk.
We're just talking about. Do. Our students and educator prep programs have the opportunity to learn about MTSS in their training programs?
Not officially.
Right.
We conducted a survey of all of our prep programs last year to see what they know about MTSS, what they're doing with MTSS. With different results. So some of them are doing a great job of it and some are not. And so. We're focusing on the admin prep programs in particular. To try to bring them in and I I get to be on an MTSS committee now. And the reason for that really is to affect just that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So how about CBE? Is that, is that something that we see in colleges? Is that, is that something that we see in colleges, universities? Absolutely, and they've been in in different forms. College universities have been doing CBE for ten, fifteen years. The Simpson down down the road just made a conscious effort across the board, everything is standards-based and they're looking at competencies. The way that we do at prep is competency-based because we're not saying you have to take a course in this or a course in this. What we're saying is that you have to be able to demonstrate understanding of this competency or this particular concept. So absolutely, it's competency-based like crazy. And one of the things later we see is is sometimes college universities failure to to get theirs at forty or fifty hours in the classroom where they have to teach with someone else. I have to teach.
Forty hours.
And how many times I read through those and they haven't done that?
Right.
Is that fair to say? And and colleges, universities aren't doing what we think is in some ways really good instruction, is combining classes. And going that route. Am I off base or not? Now, the forty hours piece, in fact, I'm just going before you that's, that we're talking about that because it's generally the adjunct faculty that come in and do a course or two.
Yeah.
And they kind of slip, but but as far as, you know, you're asking for how they do combining classes. Right, right. They're responsible for what, for every year they have to teach with another instructor? They have to do, not with other instructors, they have to be in P-12 schools. In a P-12 school. For forty hours over a five-year period. Working, but working with another. With a, within that, correct, not even in a classroom setting or a school setting, depending on what they're doing. It may not be classroom if they're not a classroom teacher, school counselor, administrator, but whatever. They need to do forty hours.
Right.
And our full-time faculty do that very well. They just don't do a good job of making sure that adjunct faculty do it. Thank you.
So thank you guys for coming in. I think what we are asking for going forward is maybe a more in-depth than MTSS. Maybe we can incorporate some more information from Larry and get that incorporated in a presentation for another meeting, but you know, and and we'll talk about feedback on how you like this process with the video and having the discussion as we go forward. But thank you, Brad. Thank you, Amy, for stepping up. I think what we'll do just for the sake of management, take a quick break and make sure we're back, you're ready to start at ten if if.
Do the history since nineteen eighty-seven.
So David, we're going to sign off for just.